On the project, on Project College Bound, posse, I'm sorry, I'm reading this all wrong. College Bound Posse Program between La Cumbre Junior High School and San Marcos High School.
We're pleased to have a shared report tonight on the College Bound Posse Program. Did you want to say anything in advance, Robyn Swawsky?
I can, or you can.
Right ahead.
We have Joanne Keynes here, principal of La Cumbre Junior High, and we have Ed Behrens, currently assistant principal, soon to be principal of San Marcos High School. And it looks like we also have Michael Alvarez in the audience, who is the, let's see, is officially dean of students at La Cumbre. And we're very, very excited about this program, College Bound. Both Joanne and Ed are really active in the new Westside Neighborhood project there, Neighborhood Community Project, and this is another program in which they're bonding together. And the Posse Program, I believe, I started hearing about it last year from Joanne, and she will tell you all about how, in fact, you've got the description up there, about how we have little groups of kids, like up to 10 kids, that are clustered together. So I won't say anything more and let her go on with the show. Thank you.
Thank you, Robyn. It's a pleasure to come before you with Principal-elect Ed Behrens from San Marcos High School. The Project College Bound, which we fondly call the Posse Project, came out of research that I did several years ago, looking at strategies to improve the number of Latino students who are partaking in post-secondary education. And I found a project on the East Coast, run by the Posse Foundation. Of course, it's supported by $365 million, but it posses up, or groups up, students from high school into college, where they take the same classes together, and they're supported with an advisor to really guide them through college. So I said, hmm. Well, I looked at the number of barriers that La Cumbre students, Westside Latinos, face as they leave La Cumbre and move on to high school. And the barriers, the barriers that our students face are, number one, they move into a large high school setting where they are dispersed and end up in classes where they may not know anybody, where they really don't have any support. The parent ed level of a large number of our students is very low, and parents are unable to support the high school-level classes. Also, 60% of our students have a language other than English as their first language, so a home language become an issue, as well as the lack of academic resources for high-end students. Most of our remedial programs target our low-end students, but there are not sufficient resources for high-end students. Couple that with a lack of technology resources once students get to high school, and of course, La Cumbre, at 80% low-income, are students who are least likely to have technology resources in the home. So I said, well, gee, for not a lot of money, why couldn't we try this between junior high and high school? So, of course, this is one of the board's big focus goals, closing the achievement gap and increasing the number of Latinos going on to higher education, and looking at the number of high-end students at La Cumbre who really should be on their way to college if they just receive support in high school. So the Project College Bound Posse Program was born, and I'm just so pleased that Ed has really embraced this program, and it's going to begin in the fall at San Marcos. By the way, this program doesn't appear to have a model anywhere in the United States. So we are really groundbreaking and perhaps becoming a model for schools across the country. So Ed is going to talk about what will happen to students as they arrive at San Marcos.
You'll be happy to know that the genesis of this actually, for me, came out of conversations with Sally Kingston at Harding when we were talking about doing some collaboration with Harding for the Apple Program. And then Sally filled me in on the Westside Project, what is now going to be referred to as Thrive. And so then, once I started finding out more about this whole project, obviously, most of the Westside students go to San Marcos High School. So then I wondered why San Marcos High School wasn't involved in this. And so, starting to research and discuss further with Sally and then with Joanne, that's when we came up with this whole concept. My original concept was, let's get these students into Avid, and then Joanne had the Posse component, so then we worked together to collaborate, Project College Bound, which will target these 40 to 60 low-income, Westside Latino students that are coming from La Cumbre to San Marcos, that are at grade level or above in math and English. And then, so they'll be posse'd together in their English and their math classes. We'll have a counselor work during the summer to make sure that they're posse'd together. Additionally, they'll be having their Avid teacher that will be with them for four years. And then, we're going to be giving our Avid coordinator, Vicki Haynes, a release period to coordinate, make sure that everything is happening that should be happening, that these students are getting all of the attention that they should be getting. So basically, these students will, for them, failure will not be an option because they're in Project College Bound. We are receiving some outside funding for this program, and so for that, obviously, we're going to have an analysis of program success. So I've written in, into the proposal, an analysis of program success, so it's gonna, we're going to guarantee that the students have a very high attendance rate. We're going to guarantee that the students maintain a high GPA, and that they're in, they're A-through-G requirements. We're going to guarantee that they're going to La Cumbre for tutoring, that they're having access to our Homework Club after school. We're going to guarantee that they're getting the proper preparation for their college test, and that they're doing well on those. Thank you. So this kind of outlines what's happening at each of the schools. As you see on the left, this is the collaboration where La Cumbre and San Marcos are providing components for these students. Obviously, it's optimal for the, some of the evening programs to be located at La Cumbre because it's closer to where the students live. It'll be more convenient for them to get there. And so, pretty much, this outlines, basically, what I, what I just described to you. It's a pretty simple concept, but we're really excited about it. We're excited about the implementation of the program, and then going forward, and having great success with, with further collaboration between San Marcos and La Cumbre.
There's one additional component. Each Posse will have an advisor, who will be a graduate of La Cumbre and San Marcos, Avid, at San Marcos. So we've already interviewed students from Avid-12, who've already come over and talked to parents and students. So we're actually going to employ those graduates, who will either be at City College or UCSB, to really be the advisors, and be in touch with them at San Marcos. And then they'll meet once a week at La Cumbre, where we will have a copy of their textbooks and provide academic support. Our, our resource coach, family resource coach, will provide family needs and, and resources that way. Happy to take your questions.
Board members, questions? Ms. Lamone?
This sounds very exciting. So I want to make sure that I understand this correctly. It's essentially clustering from elementary, no, from junior high, through high school? And the students are part of pre-existing programs or services, with the exception of the advisor? The high school, the college grad?
Joanne has taken a lot of time to identify the students, so she's given me a list of potential candidates. And then, Joanne and I had a meeting last, two meetings, last Thursday, one at 4:00 in the evening in Spanish, and then one at 6:30 in Spanish at La Cumbre, where we met with the parents of these candidates. And so, your question is, is, these students will be coming from La Cumbre, but then the Posse component is where they're actually, we're guaranteeing that the students will be together in an English or math class, so that they can basically help each other do well. And Joanne has expressed that in the past, what she's heard from, feedback from students coming from La Cumbre to high school, is that they'll get into potentially upper-level classes, and they won't know anyone in those classes. So we're possing them together, so that they have colleagues in those classes, who will also be in Avid, where they're doing their tutorials. So they'll be working really closely together in, in their English, their math, and then their Avid class together.
Okay. And if a student wanted to explore other alternatives at the high school that took them away from this clustering, would that student have the ability to do so and still be a Posse student? I mean, if they thought?
Well, they're, they're only being possied for English and math and Avid. So they are definitely free to explore all of the options. What is really critical is that they be scheduled into the A-through-G requirements, that they remain on track, and that they receive the support to stay on track and be scheduled appropriately, so that in 12th grade, they are eligible for City College, UC, and CSU admission.
So would a Posse student also be able to become or be an Apple student?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Deacon?
I had a question about the tutors. Are they going to be paid? Is that part of the private funding will go to pay the tutors?
Yes, and actually, the, the tutors will be a combination of, when it comes to math, they will most likely be credentialed math teachers. They, the two, two of, actually, three of the four math teachers at La Cumbre have already committed to working with this next year. They are paid out of the private funding. We also are hiring San Marcos students who've been through La Cumbre, who've worked with these teachers already, know sort of the routine of, of teachers. So they can do a lot of peer tutoring as well.
Thank you. I'd also just like to thank you for collaborating. I think this is really terrific. I'm glad to see it happening so soon, even before you, you know, Mr. Behrens is stepping into the principal role, but I think it's terrific. And I, I've heard so much about the success of Posse programs at the higher level, so it's great that you're starting in junior high, and I think we all know that that critical mass piece is really important if we want students to succeed, so thank you for doing this.
Really critical. Thank you.
Mr. Behrens?
Yes, I follow up, follow up on Ms. Lamone's question. You answered it real quickly about Posse and Apple. But as I understand, Apple, it's a cohort of 30 that are pretty close. When they get to San Marcos, they're, they're a pretty close group. And now you've got this cohort of 10 or 20, which I presume you want pretty close. How do you think the two groups will mesh? And is there any negativity between one versus the other? Are you going to create a barrier?
Well, it's not really a barrier, it's actually a support. If you look at a group of 30 students in the Apple Program, there might be a group of 10 students from La Cumbre. But given the barriers that La Cumbre students face at the high school level, this will support them in the Apple Program.
Ms. Parker?
I guess, I agree with Mrs. Deacon. I'm thrilled that, to see this, this, the beginnings of some closer collaboration between La Cumbre and San Marcos. There's some wonderful opportunities there that I think will really benefit our students, so I'm very impressed. And again, you know, I've heard all the terrific things about it at the college level, the high school-to-college transition, so I'm, I'm very hopeful that this will be effective in the junior high-to-high school, first step towards college. But one question I have is, what is it looking like so far in terms of your students that have, that would qualify for this, and, and your sort of recruiting for next year?
We currently have 50 students that are eligible. And again, to be eligible, students needed to have completed algebra in eighth grade. They need to be at grade level and above. And if we could go back one slide? You can see that the, the target groupings, we, like Ed said, we've had two meetings with parents, we've had parents calling. Actually, there is not a single parent that is not interested in their student participating. We've actually had the opposite reaction, people wanting into the Posse Program. So we are actually anticipating that by the following year, Ed and I have talked about expanding this a little further, and we are expecting people to be lining up for the Posse Program, Project College Bound.
I had a question regarding your part, because I, too, am happy to see the partnership. I mean, I hope that we see more of these, especially between different levels within our district, and then moving on to higher ed. So that was going to be my question, is, do you have any plans for partnering with either UCSB, well, I would think both, UCSB and Santa Barbara City College, as, you know, another partner in this, in this process? So that once the students graduate from San Marcos, they can, they have a, they may want to go on as a cohort. And I'm thinking, for example, at Santa Barbara City College, there's the plans for some of the new learning communities that are trying to promote sort of a cohort approach. So I was just wondering if there's any plans to, to move that forward?
Well, we have talked with the Mesa Program already. They are very interested in this, and of course, they are both at the junior and senior high level, so they, they will, of course, partner with us. This is sort of the pilot year, so we are anticipating that the outreach from both City College and UCSB will very much support this program.
I had one other question, which is, which you kind of touched on, which is, what is the parent participation or parent component of this?
Well, Avid already has a strong parental component. And then, what, we've already had the, the two meetings, and then I, I'm getting the list from Joanne, and I'll be contacting those families. We do have a potential summer program that will be doing an introduction to San Marcos High School for these students, and then also doing an introduction for the parents. So that is, that is in its planning stages also, as part of the pilot program. What, do you have anything to add?
Only that, from its initial meetings, parents are very enthusiastic. Of course, they want their children to go to college. And so, there are other parts of this program, you know, including partnering with the Santa Barbara Scholarship Foundation, you know, other resources in the community. But parents are very eager, very grateful, very supportive, and, and very, very encouraging in wanting their students to participate.
That's great, because I was, you know, I always think it's great when we can turn what are often labeled as barriers to success for our students. The parental education level, a lot of, the parents might not have a lot of, a high level of formal education, but they often have tremendous skills, skill sets that are really advantageous to students and to the school population as a whole, and also their home language can be very enriching. So I'm, I'm glad that the parents are kind of being brought into this, and I think sometimes, you know, those things to help the parents learn the process of, as you said, you know, the Santa Barbara Foundation, filling out scholarship forms, knowing how to help their students sort of matriculate through the system, is always great.
Right. And at the two meetings, the students from Avid-12, who are all graduates of La Cumbre, all Spanish speakers, had an opportunity to address students and parents about their experience and their role, and what students and parents have to look forward to. So parents felt very engaged, and we did test Ed's Spanish.
Yes, we did.
But, but-
And he passed with flying colors?
Absolutely passed with flying colors. So again, they, they got to hear from both Ed and myself, and then from students who have been through the Avid Program.
Great.
And who are on their way to college in the fall.
Great. Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing? You know, it seems to me the Parent Project would be a really great organization to partner with as well. And I'm not sure San Marcos has really been involved with them yet. I know Dos Pueblos has, and the junior highs in La Cuesta has, but I would love to see the Parent Project come to San Marcos, because I think it would fit right into what Mrs. Cordero was talking about.
Well, thank you very much. We always love to hear about new, new programs that are going to really be helping our students succeed. So thank you for your time and for your efforts, and we look forward to hearing more about it once you've piloted.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks, I'm excited.
Okay, great. Item F2, Presentation of Fiscal Crisis Management and Assistance Team, FICMAT, Study, and Evaluation of Santa Barbara School District's Payroll Function. Mr. Smith, well, I think, Dr. Sharpe, you're going to, you're going to introduce this?
Sure, no, that's fine.
Mr. Smith is having quite the, the agenda this evening.
Thank you. In October of last year, the board commissioned a study of our payroll function and approved retaining FICMAT, the state's fiscal crisis and management assistance team, to carry out that study. Rather than bore you with the scope of the study, I think that Diane Branham, who's a staff member from FICMAT, probably has that already identified in her PowerPoint. So I think, without wasting a lot of time, I think I'll just introduce Diane, and she has a PowerPoint, which is, I think is going to summarize her findings and recommendations. And then, she'll be happy to answer any questions, and staff's also available to answer any questions with respect to the progress we've made already with respect to implementing some of the recommendations. So Diane?
Great. Hi, I'm Diane Branham with FICMAT, the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team. And before I get started, I'm just going to hand out the PowerPoint presentation for Thanks, Eric, for letting me bore them with the scope for it. Again, we're here-
Well, I had to write it, so.
And it is quite an extensive scope, as you'll see in just a moment. For those of you who don't know who FICMAT is, we are a state agency-
Oh, we know.
You guys know, right? Okay, I'll go through it quickly. Created by Assembly Bill 1200 in the early 90s, when the Richmond Unified School District required a state loan. As you know, with any money that the state gives, comes lots of rules and regulations, so FICMAT was created by that legislation. And we, we provide both management assistance and fiscal crisis intervention. Thankfully, over 90% of our work is in management assistance, as is the study that the district required of us for the payroll review. Again, an independent external agency, and our admin agent is the Kern County Superintendent of Schools. So here's the extensive scope of work that Eric wrote for us. There were 14 separate scope points, and I've summarized them here. But first, we were looking at payroll transactions, if they're entered properly, and if they're accurate. And then we're looking at some reasonable assurance that access to the system is properly secured, and that the department is following proper internal controls. Evaluating the division of labor and segregation of duties between your classified staff in that department and the management staff member. And reviewing the payroll department workflow and staffing, providing recommendations for feasibility of a supplemental payroll, as well as determining the feasibility of eliminating the payroll split that you have in December and January for your certificated staff. And we'll talk about more specifics as we go. We're reviewing the records processing procedures and management protocol, evaluating desk manuals, reviewing the integration of position control with, between human resources and payroll departments, and then verifying compliance in areas such as STIRS and PERS, your reporting of contributions there, and unemployment compensation processing, and your federal and state tax reports, and also reviewing procedures regarding payroll deductions for So, in November, we conducted our field work in the district. The team was comprised of myself and three other members with expertise in payroll. And the report was finalized in March. And so tonight, we're just going to give you a brief outline, or I will give you a brief outline, of the findings and recommendations. There were two major components, the extensive report, I believe it was about 40 pages, and I, and I think you got a copy of it. It was broken into two major components, the first of those being department staffing and structure. Right now, the district's payroll department is comprised of one payroll coordinator, four payroll technicians, and one part-time senior office assistant, who is five hours a day. Your district's payroll coordinator is responsible for many of, many non-management tasks. And as we go through the findings and recommendations, you will find that that's a common thread that we come back to time and again, as we believe that routine tasks should be assigned to your support staff, rather than to management staff. We did conduct a staffing survey, which was included in the report. We used five districts. There was one common administration district in the state that was similar in size to Santa Barbara, that was the Santa Rosa School District. And then also, we used four unified school districts that had approximately the same numbers of students and numbers of staff, the closest that we could find in demographics to Santa Barbara school districts. The survey did indicate that your payroll staff, the number of payroll staff in the district is greater than the comparison districts. However, there are some things that you need to take into account when you look at that staffing survey, those being that Santa Barbara School District is fiscally accountable. That means that many of your processes and procedures that may normally be done by the county office is done in-house. For instance, preparing your payroll warrants and your vendor warrants, processing your STIRS and PERS reporting, tax reporting. So there's a heavier workload on the payroll staff than is found in those districts that are not fiscally accountable. It's also a common administration district, so the payroll department is responsible for two districts rather than one. So this creates some additional workload on your payroll department. While staffing comparisons are a good guideline, they can't be taken strictly by the numbers. You have to look at some of these other issues, and we'll talk about ways to do that. In completing the findings and the recommendations, here are some of the key recommendations that, that we would ask the district to consider. Reassign those routine payroll tasks to your technicians and to your, and/or to your office assistant, including payroll deductions. This seemed to be quite an interesting issue. It's, I've been in many districts throughout the state, and including the five comparison districts that we looked at. There is not a district that I'm aware of where the management staff is completing the routine daily deductions. That is always done by support staff. This would help ensure that your management person has time to oversee, evaluate the staff that they're responsible for, to analyze their work product, make sure that internal controls, processes, and procedures are in place. With that, we would suggest that you review the payroll department job descriptions, and ensure that they provide for proper assignment of duties, workflow, and necessary internal control procedures. That goes hand-in-hand with the first recommendation. With some of those issues, you, you will have to discuss them with the classified bargaining unit if they're- unit if there are substantial changes to the job description. And here's one of the ways you can determine how busy, if you will, the support staff are. And I've done this, at being a CBO in previous districts. I've done this myself, and it's very enlightening to both management and, I believe, to the employees themselves. When they sit down and you ask them for a one-month period, just for a couple of minutes at the end of each day, to write down on a little log what they spent their day doing. And it's amazing how much extra time they find that they have when they have to account for their time. So, that's just a little something that we recommend, because it does work, and it is very helpful in determining if you have too many or too few staff members. There are some things that you can do to reduce the workload of the staff in the payroll department. Right now, they're entering all the payroll transactions into your financial system, and also, or I shouldn't say "right now," when we were doing our field work in November, they were entering the information into your payroll system, and then also into a separate set of Excel spreadsheets. So, they were doing the work twice. And there are better ways to balance your payroll than to enter all the documentation twice, and we've included some of those issues in the full report. We would recommend that the technicians review the exception report and daily audit reports, and make necessary changes before that payroll is finalized. Our understanding is that was not happening on a routine basis, and we will talk about maybe some of the reasons why not a little bit later. But that is imperative that that be done. They will catch a lot of the mistakes, if there are any. And we're humans, so there usually are some mistakes when you're processing payroll for over 1,500 staff members in a very short amount of time. So, that will help eliminate some of those errors. Our second major component was looking at processes, procedures, and compliance issues. And in doing so, we tested numerous payroll records, beginning from July 2010 going through November 2010. And we did note some inconsistencies in some major areas that are listed here for you, and we'll go into more detail about those in just a few moments. But it's key that, as you begin to look at these things, that additional training is provided to the staff. Provide the training and proper oversight, and hold them accountable for what you're expecting them to do. And that is very difficult to do, again, if you have daily routine tasks, a mountain, if you will, of daily routine tasks assigned to the manager, that is to oversee the staff members. So, it's really key that the routine functions be given back to the payroll technicians. In testing the payroll records for the five-month period, we would recommend that, when the district converts to the new financial software system, which I understand you're contemplating for July of this year, you run the two systems parallel. I don't know if many of you read the educational headlines, but LA Unified had quite a fiasco with their payroll system a few years ago. Now, QSS is a tried and true system. It's not like you've purchased something that hasn't been used in school districts before. But still, whenever you're implementing a new system, it's always good to run parallel for a period of time to make sure it's working properly. We would also recommend that all contracted employees have a valid, board-approved position that is included in the position control system. In looking at position control, there were some discrepancies in what was in that system versus what was in the payroll system. And the financial software system that you have right now doesn't directly transfer the information. So, there is room for some errors there, because you're having to enter things many times twice. Some of the information has to be entered two times. So, with your new finance system, some of that should be rectified whenever you switch systems. And then, also, consider bringing in an outside expert in HR and payroll functions to provide training regarding earnings codes. And that's a very technical payroll issue, but consistency is key in payroll. You know, a teacher should be coded the same, no matter if they're a high school teacher or an elementary teacher, fourth grade or fifth grade, on their earnings codes. So, you have to look at those kinds of things for consistency. And then, develop a master list, so that all the payroll technicians, all four of them that are entering these payroll transactions, are entering them exactly the same way. We also found that the notice of employment that is sent to the employees, oftentimes there are disagreements between HR and payroll about what the number should be, and that gets sent to the employee before the conflict is resolved, if you will. So, we would recommend that the departments agree internally what those numbers should be before that information is sent out to the employees. Again, some of this is system-generated. One system has one set of numbers, your position control system, and one has another set of numbers, payroll. And payroll is what's actually being paid to your employees. But since those two systems don't speak directly to one another, sometimes there are some discrepancies in what is reported on that form. And then, ensure that all employees, sites, and departments are notified in writing regarding payroll submission deadlines, and are held accountable for them. This creates a lot of room for error, because the way that payroll is set up, and we'll talk about maybe a different structure in just a moment, but the way it's set up currently, there's a two-week period where payroll is just going nonstop. And it's a very heightened workload, if you will, for two weeks. And then, that dissipates substantially after the payroll is finalized. But if you have time sheets and things coming in beyond the due date, and employees aren't held accountable for turning them in timely, and then the payroll department is supported in saying, "We can't pay you because you haven't turned in your documentation timely," that leaves much room for error whenever you're processing things at the last minute or changing your payroll at the last minute. Again, you want to make sure that that is communicated to your employees in writing, so everybody is aware of the deadlines. Provide school-sided administrators, department managers, and office personnel with proper training regarding hiring procedures, and hold them accountable to follow the procedures. As in many school districts, we find that payroll is the last to know that someone is hired, and they only know that on payday when the person shows up and says, "Where's my check?" And payroll has no clue that this person should have been paid. The district does have hiring procedures, but sometimes the staff at school sites, as in most districts, get in a bit of a hurry, and they start the person before all the paperwork is completed. So, we would, again, recommend that all this be communicated to your staff in writing, and that they be given proper training, and then held accountable to follow the rules. Determine the correct interpretation of the CSCA collective bargaining agreement regarding vacation approvals, and apply them consistently. What we found here was that the payroll department and HR interpret the vacation language in your collective bargaining agreement differently. So, when my accrual moves, you know, in the end of the third year or the beginning of the fourth year, which one is it where I get my extra days of vacation? So, the district should determine what the actual interpretation is, and then make sure that all departments are applying it consistently. Conduct a mandatory meeting with HR, payroll, and technology staff when agreements are negotiated that affect payroll processes and procedures. Very important when you have contract changes, that the people in the trenches that are implementing those changes know that they happened. So, anytime that you have a settlement of a collective bargaining agreement, it's just good practice to make sure your staff at the district office, HR, payroll, know what they're supposed to be doing. Meet with CSCA and renegotiate the settlement agreement regarding overpayments. Right now, what the district has in place, again, it's a negotiated agreement, so you would have to sit down and talk with the unit about the possibility of changing that. But what we found, particularly with sick leave and vacation leave, industry standard is, if I am given a bank of sick leave and vacation leave, and I overuse that, let's say I overuse it in April, my paycheck in May will reflect a reduction in salary because I overused my bank of leave. The district has a negotiated agreement that says that's not an automatic occurrence. So, you have to, and your payroll techs aren't even allowed to talk to employees about it. It has to go through management employee. And then, the employee that's affected has to be notified, they have to come in, and you have to work on an agreement where they pay the district back. If the district makes an error, that's exactly what should be occurring. If the district makes an error in payroll, you cannot automatically deduct that many. But standard industry practice is, if I, as an employee, have overused my leave, that's not a district error. That's my issue, and the district should not be just paying extra, if you will. What if the employee says, "I'm not going to pay you back," and they keep overusing their leave, because there's no consequence? You know, your only alternative, really, is to go to small claims court and deal with that. So, the settlement agreement is very restrictive and does not follow industry standards, so we would recommend that you renegotiate that agreement. Again, ensure that proper training has been provided, and clear direction and oversight by district management is given to payroll staff. And again, that's just a common thread throughout this report. There was an issue that we found with confidential employees, some information indicating that they are overtime exempt. They may be overtime exempt, but being a confidential employee doesn't automatically exempt them. A confidential employee is required to deal with confidential negotiations information. And overtime-exempt employees are typically management supervisory staff members. So, there are different rules for both of those titles. And we would recommend that you look at those rules, and then marry up those confidential that are actually overtime-exempt, and you may have some that are not. Internal controls. Internal controls are checks and balances, if you will, and segregation of duties, so that district assets are protected. One employee doesn't have ownership from beginning to end of a transaction. So, in the payroll department, I should not be able to add an employee and then pay that same employee, because it would be very easy for me to create an employee, if you will, we sometimes call them ghost employees, and send that to my checking account at the end of each month. So, you want to make sure that there's a segregation of duties, and how your payroll system and your position control system can be accessed. Again, assign the task of payroll processing deductions to the payroll technicians, and assign the task of processing wage garnishments to at least two technicians. Right now, one person does that. So, that is not an ideal internal control. You should separate that amongst at least two employees, preferably three. And then, assign each payroll department staff member to complete a step-by-step procedures manual for their job duties. And that's very important in cross-training, and then also in making sure that, when an employee is absent, it's much easier for someone to go to that person's desk and say, "Oh, I don't process garnishments, but this person who does is out ill today, and so I can take this manual and figure it out. With a little help from my manager, I can figure it out." So, it's very good to have manuals on each desk, helps with internal controls as well. And then, we always, of course, encourage our employees to use their accrued vacation leave. We do not encourage them to take it all at once in one department. And that's what we found in payroll, that on some paydays, the entire payroll staff is taking vacation. And we would recommend that at no time that happen, but particularly not on a payday. That's just not good for customer service. You know, unless you're a very unusual district, there are questions on paydays. And if there's no one there to answer their questions, that's not really fair to the employees, because most of us are working to earn a paycheck, not just simply for the joy of working, but we're working for a paycheck as well. So, you want to make sure that there are people there that can answer their questions Payroll cycles, and also the December and January payroll splits, just to talk about those for a minute. Right now, you have all of your payroll being processed and paid on the last working day of the month, which, as I suggested earlier, creates quite a peak of a workload for about two weeks out of the month, and then it drops off significantly after that. Industry standard, and those five districts also that we surveyed, have at least two payrolls a month, and we would recommend that Santa Barbara does as well. That you implement a mid-month payroll for your substitutes, hourly employees, overtime employees, extra duty, those kinds of things. Makes the, it just smoothes out the workload throughout the month, and it makes balancing each of those payrolls much simpler, if you will, creating less room for error. And also, in looking at your payroll cycles, we found that your certificated employees are paid now either September through June or September through August. Although the calendar has now changed, your school calendars, they're starting in August rather than in September. And we would recommend that the district contact STIRS, and determine if they shouldn't be considered 11-month employees, so that their pay would start in August rather than September. And your county office may weigh in on that as well. And then, regarding the December and January payroll split, that is something where, at some point in time, certificated employees, rather than being paid at the end of the month in December, as they are with all the other months, that payroll was moved to the first of January. And the district has decided that they would like to change that and make it consistent, so that every month, certificated employees are paid at the end of the month, and that divide isn't created between December and January. We would recommend that you consider establishing a committee to evaluate some of those changes before you do it. Make sure you get the employees involved, because there will be some tax ramifications, tax reporting ramifications for them in that first year, because that first year, they will have 13 paychecks rather than 12. Where in, when it was changed, the first year, they had 11 rather than 12. So, now, they would have 13. So, important to get employees involved and make sure that they're aware of that change long before it occurs. Okay, processing procedures and file management. We're finding, in testing the records, that many of the original documents, such as time sheets and leave requests, are kept at the school sites, and they're not sent to the payroll department. That can create room for error, because the sites are transposing all of that information, summarizing it, if you will, onto one sheet. And that is room for human error right there. And then, that information is put into your payroll system. The information that goes into your payroll system should be from original documentation, and that original documentation should be held in the payroll office. So, there's one last step, if you will, for making that human error. And then, reviewing the record retention period, and making sure that the payroll department is aware of those record retention requirements. Position control integration, we talked about much of this already, but we would suggest that you implement a new hire checklist in the payroll department. Your HR department has one, and it tells them all the forms they need to have, and they can check it off as they get the forms. Payroll should have the same thing, to make sure that, when they're entering data, that something hasn't been forgotten, and to make sure they collect all of that information timely. We talked about the transition of your payroll system and the issues there. And also, making sure that your payroll staff members are provided and attend training that regards payroll functions. There was an issue where you're implementing a more automated system, if you will, for the paperwork for hiring and changing positions, and some payroll staff members chose to go to that training and some didn't. And our recommendation would be that it not be a choice. If you're going to work in this department, these are the things you need to know, and the district will provide that training, but employees are required to attend it. STIRS and PERS contributions. We did find some inconsistencies in the payroll testing that we did for STIRS and PERS. Again, this is a very specialized area, STIRS and PERS reporting, very specialized. And because you're fiscally accountable, the county office doesn't provide those services to you, as they do with some districts. This district is responsible for doing that themselves. So, one of the ideas that we provided in the report... So one of the ideas that we provided in the report was for you to consider taking one of your payroll technician positions and making it a specialist in retirement reporting and spreading out the payroll among the other three technicians because this is such a highly specialized field. And you may choose to do it a little differently than that, but again, really to have one or two people very focused and very trained in the consistency with STIRS and PERS reporting. Consult with STIRS and PERS administration as they may provide some onsite training for you and continuing education. Many times, they will do that at the county office level. So you may be able to attend that as well. And also, there seemed to be some issues with STIRS and PERS reporting going years back. And if your staff are not well-trained in the retirement codes and in reporting those issues, they're going to make mistakes, and they're going to make them over and over and over because they don't even know they're mistakes. So we would recommend that you try and find either from STIRS and PERS or the county office, someone that's very versed in those reporting codes, that could come in and assist your staff and train them, and to go back and clean up any issues that may be outstanding from prior years. Your staff really can't do it at this point because they may not recognize yet what some of the issues are. So it's very important that you have someone who specializes in that come in and help the district. And again, a master list for the earnings types and the retirement codes so that everybody, when they're putting in their payroll, they're applying those codes consistently. And we also looked at unemployment and quarterly tax processing and reporting. We found some discrepancies there as well. And the IRS has notified the district that the quarterly tax reports don't match your W-2s. So they want you to tell them why. Why don't they match? Well, in testing those records, we looked at your September quarterly report, your Form 941, and found that gross wages were being reported on that form where on the W-2, it's adjusted gross wages. So of course, they're not going to match because you're reporting two different things. So that may be a simple fix if that's the only thing that that was outstanding with those reports. So again, audit and make corrections to those forms and assign an employee to review the reporting before it is sent to the state agency. The payroll coordinator completes those documents, and that's perfectly acceptable. That is, that's a high-level kind of thing. So that would be perfectly acceptable for the coordinator to complete those. But again, it's always good to have a second set of eyes, especially when you're reporting things to the IRS and to the Employment Development Department. Just a couple more slides, we're almost finished. Federal and state withholding allowances. In testing those records, we found again that there were a few inconsistencies. The proper forms were not always included in the employee's payroll file. For instance, if you report your state taxes, if you want something different withheld than you do on your federal taxes, you have to complete a state form. Rather than just completing your W-4, you have to complete the state equivalent, the DE-4. Well, many of the payroll records had two different items reported, but there weren't two different forms in the payroll file, and more specifics were listed in the full report. But again, for customer service, have those forms available in your HR and payroll departments, and even have a link to them on your district website to make sure employees have access to those. And make sure that they're, the new forms are included in your new hire orientation packets. Make sure that in 2011, you're giving them the 2011 forms and not using one from a prior year. We found that in, as one of the inconsistencies when testing the records. The earned income credit, that's just something that the district should be aware of, no longer done through payroll. That has to be done by the employee on their annual tax returns. And then the records retention is listed here for your W-4 and DE-4 forms. And again, make sure that the employee files include the forms. Some of the testing that we did when we asked for a random sampling of employees, there were no forms at all in the payroll files. So you need to make sure you have documentation to back up what's being reported on your payroll. And lastly, employee deductions and vendor payments in that testing. This is the one huge area where we saw the payroll coordinator doing the routine tasks, and we talked about that earlier. And again, we would recommend that you assign those to your support staff and have the coordinator oversee that work. Also, in payroll deductions, we found that the collective bargaining agreements have some conflicting language regarding whether or not a deduction form has to be signed by the employee or whether the dues are automatically deducted. So we would recommend that that language be cleaned up, and the district makes a determination whether a deduction form is actually needed or not. And then ensure that the employee files include a signed authorization form for all deductions. There were some that we found in the testing, not a lot, but there were a few that we found in the testing where there wasn't a form included in the file. And that concludes our findings and recommendations. Are there any questions?
Before you launch into questions, I think Eric may want to address some of these findings. We invited this report from FICMAT because this is exactly the kind of thing we wanted to find out about our procedures and our people. And we thought that the report and the analysis was thorough, yet very sobering. And we have launched into a number of changes, starting with a new director for payroll to rectify our problems. These have been longstanding problems in our district, and they must be, they must be fixed. Eric?
Yeah, I think Meg's going to elaborate here in a minute, but but one of the things that we'd long been concerned about was this process of upward delegation where basically we had things being delegated upward from staff to the coordinator position, as you heard throughout this presentation, and made it very problematic relative to things that should be getting done. I will say that, you know, we brought on Yolanda Ortiz in January, and she's made a significant difference just in terms of not only the processes and procedures that Meg's going to talk about, but also the climate and the environment in that department. So why don't I turn this over to Meg, she can talk to you about where we are in several of these recommendations, and then if you have questions for Diane, she can respond as well.
We've made a lot of progress, I believe, in implementation of some of the recommendations that FICMAT has recommended. When, it was a really good, as hard as those three months were that we went through, it was the best three months because once they put it in this format and once we could read it and we knew a lot of these things were happening, I'm not sure we would have necessarily found them had we not been thrown into the three months worth of payroll. But one thing that I really want to talk about right off the bat, because when you mentioned IRS not matching your W-2s and your 941s, that was a huge issue when we found the letter in the coordinator's office. And we were a million short in the high school, a million under in the elementary. But they didn't tell you that. The IRS does not report the negative, the money you overpaid. They only write, they only say, "Give me the money you owe us." So we knew what was happening, we fixed it. We've got 2008, '09 cleared, or 2008 cleared, we got 2009 cleared. Our 2010 is clean as a whistle, and our 2011 does not have problems as of, we, every month, we tie out the payroll to the W-2 pre-list. So I want to reassure you that we have no more IRS issues at this time. That's a big one. Another one that I know you would be concerned about is the STIRS. We have one of our payroll techs that is very knowledgeable about STIRS. We've brought people in from STIRS and gave her training, more training. She's cleaned up years and years of the STIRS reporting. So we've made huge progress on that. So the, those are the two biggest things that we can commend ourselves for, are those two issues. One thing that we would like to do, we would like to implement a lot of the changes as far as the deductions and the way we have it working right now is some people do certificated payroll, some people do classified, some do elementary, some do high school. Once we get into QSS, we don't have to do that because we're in two databases right now. We'll be in one database. Whether we're unified or not, we're in one database. So we have other ways that we're thinking about doing this. However, we're implementing a new financial system. So a whole new learning curve with people, some people have not even been on a web or a, you know, web-based looking system, and it's very hard at this point to navigate. So we're going to back off on some of the implementations that we want to do, and we will do, but we want to give them some time to get used to the system. Another thing that we are doing, this Friday, we are done, doing a parallel payroll, our first one. What we will do is each one of the payroll techs are pulling 10 people, you know, printing out a full payroll register for them, and we're going to go and implement it, input it into the QSS system, print all the reports of QSS. One of the QSS owners will be here working with us to see if everything comes out exactly the way it should. So we'll have about a test of about 50 people, and then next month, we'll have probably triple that or maybe, you know, 100, I don't know. We're going to do a lot more than that. And then in June, we'll run a full parallel payroll. Our goal is to be up and running on July 1 with payroll. Another item that we are doing is we're talking a lot with HR. And this has been a hole for a long time, the communication between HR and payroll. And they should be, just like purchasing an AP, should be connected at the hip, and they should be communicating with each other. And I think with the new payroll coordinator and the internal auditor, myself, and all the people in HR, we're all on the same page. We all want it done right the first time. We're going to make it, and we're going to do it right. And we're, we finally got this go-team type attitude where we haven't had that in the past, and that's, that's a real positive thing. They've, now that payroll feel that they can go into payroll and our HR and talk, and HR can go into payroll. I won't bore you with a lot of these things that we're doing, but we are really making progress, and we are doing the December split. We're getting rid of the split payroll. We've notified through E-News, I think, already three times. Everything that we send out in E-News, we send to Lane so he can put it in the, his newsletter. This, on April 29, payroll's going out with this bright green fluorescent sticker that says, "Split payroll's going to happen," and we will keep doing it, and we will keep reminding the people. Our last one will probably be in October. So people have been notified, and we're, I think we're doing a pretty good job of getting that word out and educating the people. We're having a Q and A in an E-News about your STIRS retirement and how the furloughs affect STIRS and, you know, what, you know. So we're, we're communicating more and more through E-News and other things to educate our staff.
Wow, they've been busy.
Yeah, we've been notifying people for a year now about the split payroll change, and we'll continue to notify them regularly over the next half-year so that when it happens, then we'll probably only get a few people who don't seem to know that it is happening.
One, one other thing that I want to mention is that the, the hiring of people before we know it, this, this is a concern of ours, and we, you know, when you have people out there that think they're in HR department and they just go ahead and hire people and get them working, and then we're, we're, we have to sit there and pay the person even though, because they worked, we have to pay them. So we really need to be unified on that in regards to saying, "No. I'm sorry." You know, you have to follow the rules, and that's what we need to get across with the staff that's not at the district office.
And we would caution the district also on that issue, that you have a liability when, when that is allowed to occur.
I have had an experience with the district where the principal decided they would hire a coach before the, the hiring process was completed, and they were out on the field with students. The person did not pass fingerprints. They could not legally work. And in that instance, you cannot legally pay them. But that just brings up a whole other issue, a whole other liability issue, if you will, in that hiring process. It's imperative that no one start to work before all of the procedure has been completed.
Thank you. Board members, Ms. Parker.
I, first of all, want to thank you and your team from FICMAT for this
Excellent.
Thorough and understandable report for pieces that most of us don't normally read about or come into contact with. Great deal of detail, but very understandable. So thank you, Ms. Branham. I know that we, as individual, individual board members, over the past few years, we've, we've gotten lots of, you know, complaints here and there, and we certainly would talk to fiscal services about it, but obviously, you, Ms. Jete, and you, Mr. Smith, were seeing this in the aggregate and seeing, I know that you had enormous concerns, and I so appreciate that you came forward with a request for the, this review. I don't know if there were any bright spots in this report for you or if every nightmare came true, but in reading this as a board member, it was extremely dismaying. And I appreciate that you haven't sat still and waited for this to come forward before making changes in payroll, and I know that obviously you've had this document or some draft of this document for some time so that you've been able to work off some of these points. And I appreciate that you're, that you're moving on these recommendations. One comment is that I think that we are going to need to see a layout along the lines of special ed study that shows what, what's in the works, what you've completed. There is a lot of opportunity for improvement here, and, and we need to be keeping track of it's progress as you're moving forward with it. I have three questions, which I'll just lay out for you. One is, we appear to be, it appears to be very rare for districts to not be run, or to be fiscally accountable, that they're not, that their payroll's not run through the county ed office. And so I know that we've looked at this as a district in the past, but we haven't looked at it again recently, so I just want a, a brief explanation of why it is that it doesn't make sense to go back to the county at this point. Second question is, how are discussions going with the CSEA about some of the changes that we need with the texts and with the language around our, our contract with them? And then a really specific one, on page 17 of the report, you list a number of, you did a test on certificated employees, and you found some issues, and they were reviewed by the district and they were all found to be justified. And I appreciate that they were all found to be justified, but I, I don't know if you can go into more specifics, I don't know if that's for you, Ms. Jete, about how these things were justified, including over $11,000 in car expense stipend in October, November of last year.
I want, before we, before we begin answering those, I want to just query the, the board for a second here. I assume that many of us have questions. We are significantly over time on this agenda item. Do we want to take time to have the questions answered here tonight? Or would we like to give the questions and then have them come back to us, the answers come back to us possibly in a board brief?
Let me add to that, that the next item is on tonight's agenda because it is time-sensitive.
At least with the first set of questions, I would like some. Maybe we can all just pick our top, but I, I think some are probably important to address tonight.
Okay. Okay. So with, are you saying?
Mrs. Parker asked my two questions.
Okay. And, and one of mine. Okay, so, so we'll take these questions, then we'll, we'll get the answers.
I'll, I'll start with number one because I'm probably the most familiar with it. In 2003 and 2005, I was either a consultant FICMAT staff member on two separate FICMAT studies done in this district. I believe in 2005, the issue of fiscal accountability and the corollary issue of payroll function was studied, and one of the ques- And one of the questions that was posed by the district was, "Why are we fiscally accountable? Would there be a benefit to going back to the county office?" And the county office providing both payroll and to some degree, AP, you know, auditing. The answer to that is actually twofold. One, they're not exactly receptive to us coming back there. And two, in the event that we relinquished our fiscal accountability status for the county office to take us back up, they would charge you. Now, that amount was never quantified, but based on discussions we had with them. And I wasn't in this role, obviously. I got the feeling it would be significant. So, that's the answer to that question. Next question was?
CSEA?
CSEA, that settlement agreement was negotiated by my predecessor. I know a little bit about it. Obviously, we've been focused on other issues with CSEA. It is something that we could probably approach in our next round of negotiations.
Well, my, my-
And I will tell you that we've been through three regional labor reps in, what, the course of a year? And the person who was, had a longstanding relationship with the district, CSEA counseled him that basically, and I disagree with him and I think Diane does too, is that basically, we had to have independent signature authority from any employee, CSEA unit member that was affected if we wanted to impose a deduction.
Well, my other piece on that was the fact that the techs were refusing to do what are considered routine tech duties. And that appeared to actually already exist in their contract or in their job description.
It's not explicit. And I think that's where the problem is, is the ambiguity in the job description allowed them to upward delegate. And so, we will resolve that.
And it was also, as I recall, included in your coordinator job description. So, that gave them even more of an argument, if you will. Those routine types of tasks, in my opinion, should not be included in a management job description.
Okay.
And the third question, I don't know anything about, so I'm gonna have to defer to Diane.
On the third question, whenever we, I don't have the exact responses for each item with me, but we did verify that with fiscal services. We didn't just simply ask payroll if what they did was accurate. So, we went back to a different department, if you will, to verify why these had been paid. But I don't have the exact responses.
So, if we wanted that kind of information, we might need to get that in the board brief. And I would really like to see that.
My thinking was, since it affects personnel, wouldn't that be a closed session? Description of those items?
Would we be identifying the specific individuals?
I don't think you would need to identify specifics.
Well, we'll take a look at how the information comes to us and determine whether it's confidential or whether it's open.
One wants to send the questions to me. I'll make sure that they get answered in a board brief.
Thank you.
And I just want to echo what board member Parker said. I mean, I've seen a lot of FICMAT reports. I think this is one of the best ones I've ever seen.
Maybe it was that extensive scope of work.
And that could be. You know, you started with a good product, Diane.
There you go.
But, you know, I have an interesting anecdote. You know, when she told me who the team members were, you know, I know Diane. You know, we weren't staffers at, you followed me, huh? Yeah, so, but Anthony Bridges and I kind of found her. And then, and then, but when she showed up with her team, one of her team members was an account tech of mine 15 years ago in Eureka, who had operated on CECC because, you know, Eureka City Schools was the exact same configuration as us back then, but subsequently, Thompsonville Unified. But CECC was our financial system. And then, she left after I went back to Paso Robles and she went to Chico and operated as a position control person for Chico Unified. So, I hadn't seen her in like years and then she shows up.
I just want to say one thing about the FICMAT report, that it was really reassuring to walk in there and as many things as you thought were wrong, were wrong. And we, so we knew we were on the right path, you know, because none of us had ever done school payroll before. So, that was really reassuring. As horrible as it is, we'll get there. I have no doubt we'll get there. We have a good team in place.
And keep in mind, if you would, also, that FICMAT reports are written in a deficit mode.
Yes.
We're here to tell you about things that you can improve, you know, not to put a bunch of flowers on the paper and send it to you and tell you everything's great. We're really looking at ways to improve. There are things that are happening properly, obviously, in payroll. Or you'd have 1,500 employees lined up each month. Because payroll is one of those areas where you only hear about it when it's wrong. You know, no one calls you to say, "Woo-hoo, you got my payroll right this month." I've never had that call in 25 years.
I suspect in our district, they should be making that call.
So, there are things that are right, okay? But we do write, our findings are based on things that need to improve.
Ms. Lamont?
So, after that comment, I will tell you that I will be calling my payroll department where I work and let them know because there were some things, as a manager, I work closely with my payroll department. And there were some things here that I saw that made my jaw drop. But, one very specific thing that you mentioned that came out to me, and actually, we just reviewed a board policy or AR. And I don't know if we actually reviewed it or if it's on our May 13 meeting. But refers to the overuse of sick time and vacation. And did we just review that policy where we didn't actually put anything in place that-
That was the management policy? Where we have a legal question on it and it's with legal counsel.
Okay. All right.
It's coming back to us.
Okay, thank you.
I also need to acknowledge Eric Smith for the desire, the fervent desire to get to the bottom of all of this. And Meg Jete for stepping in when we had a change in the director. Meg stepped in and said, "We will make this happen." And she's really gone over and above in ensuring that.
Well, I want to echo that as well as one of the previous comments regarding the report itself. Number one, I think not only was the report very thorough, but it truly was understandable. It was written in such a way that you could actually read it and not get completely lost.
You didn't fall asleep? Not the first one.
I can't say it was the most thrilling thing I've ever read, but it was understandable. I mean, and it did have, yes, it did have some, it did have, it did have its moments, yes. I didn't fall asleep. But it was extremely readable, extremely clear. And that was, I truly appreciated that. But I also wanted to echo the comments on the staff in that I felt like this was a report where the staff really welcomed it, really worked to help make sure that it was done thoroughly and with accurate information and that really got to all the points that we needed to get. There was no defensiveness on the part of the department. And I think that also produced the extremely clear results that we had. So, I think that even though it obviously uncovered some issues that we wish didn't exist, it was very helpful to see them and to get them and to know that the department was really working to make sure that they were identified so that they could be rectified. And that's very reassuring to know that we, as we go forward, we can trust that this is really going to be, that these issues will really be addressed. So, I would like to repeat what, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't recall who said this. I think it might have been Mr. Aaron. That it would be nice to have something along the lines of perhaps a special ed report in terms of what the plans are to address this. And then, also even just maybe a written repetition of what Ms. Jete presented to us tonight about what has already been accomplished. That would be very useful and we could just get that in the, in the board brief. Ms. Deacon, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to speak briefly to this. First of all, yes, Ms. Jete was a hero on the payroll piece and Julie Avnet helped. And I know that a lot of people really, well, you two mainly burned the midnight oil to get it right. I have to say, it's pretty horrifying that this has gone on as long as it has. I mean, that's, it's scary that it really was able to get this bad before we caught it. So, I think that's important to be said. And I think what you mentioned about accountability and consequences is really important. I mean, we really have to hold people accountable so that these kinds of things don't slip anymore. I just wanted to follow briefly on Mrs. Parker's question about the county. Are we the only district in our county that is fiscally accountable?
In this county, yes. But we're not the only district that's fiscally accountable.
No, I know that. But in our county, we are. And is the county allowed to say no if we wanted to say, take this back?
Well, I mean, basically, we could ask, we could ask them to rescind. But if they were gonna perform functions on our behalf, they'd have the right to charge us.
Sure, sure. And we currently employ about two and a half more people than all these other comparable districts. And I don't know if those salaries equal what they might be.
I don't know.
And I'm not saying we should do this, but I, you know, it's, you look at every single one of these comparable districts and they're spending a lot less on personnel and they don't have the headache of doing this.
Yeah, I need to say, there are other issues as well. We think going to QSS will help us tremendously and county doesn't have that available. There are other related issues.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of issues. Fiscal accountability, I mean, you've got at least three things that are probably ending up having more staff than comparative. Your common administration, which, you know, as you heard Meg say, right now in our financial system, we've got to log in and out, in and out, in and out between districts right now. So, that's just more keystrokes, more time. You've got the issue with fiscal accountability, which in terms of, you know, retirement reporting, in terms of, you know, all those things that were mentioned, that requires more staff. But there's a trade-off. I mean, you have some flexibilities. We can do some things that make us, should make us, especially with the new financial system, a lot more nimble and quick and we're not dependent on county office timeline. So, we can do things that in an emergency situation, we'd be beholden to their timeline. So, there's a flexibility concern there. And then, the third issue was, I talked about common administration, fiscal accountability. And what was the third one? Lost my train of thought.
QSS.
Oh, yeah. Just going to a better financial system because the financial system we're on is archaic.
I would, you've probably thought about this, but it seems like doing this one-month management analysis of duties might make sense to hold off until we know about whether unification has happened because you don't want to do it twice.
It's not only about the unification, it's how quickly, how much faster is this, this QSS is gonna be? That's the big thing. I mean, we can upload time sheets, you know, I mean, which we couldn't do before. That's reviewing, uploading them into the system. There's no keying. So, we have a lot of shortcuts, but we need to know, we need to test this. We need to be on this. We need to analyze it before we can start making a lot of the changes that we think we want to go towards. But we just have to give our staff some time. We can't implement so many things at one time. It'll be overload. And it's a new year and we're getting ready to do open enrollment in September. I know that sounds really far off, but it's not. We gotta close the books. You know, I mean, we got a ton of stuff to do between now and September.
And on the split payroll, are people gonna have to change their withholding just for this one year and then change it again? So, that's part of what you're telling people, right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's exactly. And we've been telling them over and over and over. And you know, the other thing too, I mean, I don't, I don't think you spoke to the supplemental payroll issue when we're thinking about implementation. But this is the only district I've ever been in that doesn't run a supplemental payroll, a mid-month.
Well, what I'm hearing about the supplemental payroll is, I used to think that that was a really good idea too because we kept doing so many manual checks. But we don't do manual checks anymore. We do, we took it down from maybe two to three dozen a month to a handful. So, I was thinking, why are we doing this if we miss so many payroll? But a long story short, it's harder to take vacation when you've got a supplemental payroll.
That's true.
So, we have to consider that. So, we just need some time. We'll get there. And there's a lot of things that we can implement, whether we're on QSS or CECC system. But then, there are a lot of other things that we may have to wait a little bit and see how it all pans out. I want to say one thing about the county taking our payroll back. I was there when you guys came to say, "Take our payroll back." And they really don't want to because they have to hire more staff. They, you know, this is a big, a big district for them. And so, they would have to hire more staff and it would be costly. And they take it out of the interest earned on our money, which is not much anymore, but it used to be quite a bit of money. And that's why we got out in the first place. They charge so much money.
Okay, well, that gives us a lot to think about. Certainly, we look forward to having more discussion and information regarding how these six are going to, how these recommendations are going to be implemented and the timelines for those. So, with that said, thank you very much. And we will look forward to also getting some additional information in the board brief. Item F3, as Dr. Starve said, is time-sensitive. So, the first reading of board policy revision for board, I think we mean board policy, 3312, contracts, administrative regulations, 3350, travel expenses, and 3600, consultants. And this is again for Mr. Smith.
Yeah, actually, this is, we're trying to make the board policies and ARs consistent across these three areas. We had discrepancies in terms of different dollar amounts and they didn't marry up. So, we're trying to make it consistent across the board. I know that Julie, this was time-sensitive and maybe Meg can help me on this because I know Julie was heavily involved with putting this together. But you can see the strikeout changes. And I know that she went through the board policies and ARs that were currently in place in excruciating detail to make sure everything matched up. And this relates to travel and conference and what respect, I mean, the urgency issue here.
Well, I believe the urgency issue is more for board policies 3600. I mean, they're all important to do. And 3312, which is consultants and contracts. Right now, on 3600, board policy 3600, it says all consultant contracts must be-
Could you give us a page number?
I guess it's, I have a different-
Page, page 10?
Yeah. It says, "All consultant contracts shall be brought to the board for approval." So, here we are and we have Lyndamud Bell for 25 kids. I'm making this up, but they're $1,200 or $1,500. We have to bring every single one of those to the board for approval. It's redundant, it's, it's almost like the purchasing orders, you know, when they went from $500 to $10,000. It processes, the processing is great, it's quicker. It quickens the process is what I'm trying to say.
So, the issue is the authority issue, like for purchase orders, which are tantamount to agreements. We have a $10,000 threshold. But the literal interpretation of the AR, the BP said, "Hey, if we had a contract for $50, we'd bring it to the board." So, we're trying to make those consistent.
Exactly. So, it's just, and a lot of times, these people will start right away and the, it's their IEP-driven and we're bogged down in the system for a $1,200 contract. So, we, and then, we would like to get them all consistent, the purchase orders, the contracts, and the consultants, all at $10,000 so that no one's confused. No, everyone knows what the rules are. It's a little easier to follow. Plus, then to have the settlements for $50,000, compromises or settlements, which is a couple paragraphs down.
Right. And that is something that already existed in board policy, but we thought we should make it explicit. So, I'm not sure we carry it out, but, I mean, it has been there. And it's something that with regard to settlement of claims, there's a $50,000 threshold that is delegated to the superintendent or designated. So, when Julie was putting this together and said, "Well, I want to move everything back to the $10,000 threshold to make it consistent," I said, "Well, are you aware of this? And if you're not, this should also be called out."
Okay, so, board members, I want to just start with BP 3312. Do board members have any questions or comments? This is our first reading, so, which is our opportunity to give any feedback or direction to the board. I mean, sorry, to the staff.
Ms. Deacon?
Ms. Deacon?
Want to mention that I, I think the recommendation of staff is to waive the second reading. Is that correct? Is what it says at the bottom?
That's correct.
Yes. Oh, that's right. I apologize. So we do, you are asking for us to take action on this tonight.
Correct.
I would just say on 3312, I think we don't have vending machines anymore that sell sodas, non-unhealthy drinks, or non-nutritional foods. So that's, that's great. Isn't that true?
Is that true?
It's not.
I'm not sure that's true.
I think in some of the-
On the school site?
I think in some of the staff-
Some of the staff rooms.
Areas, there are.
Okay. I guess it's just because I go to the Wellness Council meeting, so I hear what's happening at the sites. I forgot about the.
Water or water?
I'm fine with 3312.
Okay. Do we want to act on 3312?
I'll move that we approve the revisions to Board Policy 3312.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that one passes 5-0. 33-
Should that, should that have said we waived the second reading, or is that necessary?
Um, I don't, do we need to vote to waive the second reading? I don't think so. We, we are able to act on conference agenda items. Okay, so AR 3350. Ms. Lamont?
So I actually have a couple of things. On page six, the 60 days, I'm wondering why it's 60 days. 60 days seems like a long time to submit receipts for travel, especially in light of the conversation we just had about this, so.
Well, we used to have 30 days, and nobody turned them in. So we figured from the 30, 60 days from travel, it gets people's credit cards hit, they can, you know, there was just a real time lag. There was, nobody was turning them in on 30 days, so we're holding steady on 60. And we've had a lot of people come in and try to present after 60 days, and we say no, and they get all upset, but we, and they said, how come you changed your policy? And we said, well, this, this is to your benefit. We just gave you an extra 30 days, and you still didn't make it in. So we feel it's more of a, a fair timeline.
60 days seems like a lot for me. We have less than that where I work, and it, people get used to it. So I don't know. In light of this conversation, I think waiting two months can seem like a lot, but that's fine. Sec, the other thing, under the, the bullet points on that same page, could we put alcohol as its own bullet and not necessarily include it? And the mini-bar may be reimbursed if employees submit and itemized, et cetera, et cetera. So if alcohol was its own, it would be implied that it would apply?
Okay. I'm so, how are you saying to do that?
Right above mini-bar?
Right above mini-bar. Just have a bullet point with the word alcohol.
Alcohol is not reimbursable.
Yeah, just the sentence that says alcohol.
Alcohol is not reimbursable?
You want a separate bullet that says alcohol.
Or just say alcohol period.
Yeah, alcohol.
Bullet that says alcohol is not reimbursable.
Yeah, it prefaces with examples of unallowable expenditures are, therefore alcohol.
Okay.
Yeah, just alcohol would apply. And then, a question about gratuity. 15%. I've seen 18%, given that sometimes you're traveling with other colleagues, and you all of a sudden get taxed with 18% gratuities added on there. So I'm just curious if it has to be 15, or...
Well, if you were traveling with multiple people sitting at the same table, it would be split up, right? The 15% or the 18%? That, we would only allow that person to claim 15% of it.
So if, if-
If they get to $30, they can only, we only allow them to charge 15% of their $30, which is their amount that they can have for dinner.
But, but I think what you're saying is that if it's imposed on them-
Yes, if it's-
And it's an 18% gratuity because of a group, rather than being at their discretion.
Right. And I've seen that happen in, in settings.
We would have to separate that out in that case. Otherwise, you'd get an automatic 18% from too many people.
So then perhaps we could add language that if it's district group travel and 18% is imposed, it would be acceptable.
I'm just imagining that if you have a group of 10 district employees who sit down at a dinner table together, and ask the restaurant to provide separate checks for each of those 10-
Alcohol.
And separate ones for alcohol, or else have the alcohol line itemed. They would probably want to charge a gratuity of 30%.
And also, they'll charge tax, you know, you tip on the alcohol. So, I mean, you can-
So I guess that eight, I've seen 18. I think above 18 is a little bit different, but 18's pretty standard when you're doing group travel. And so I just put that out there because this isn't included, and in some ways, it, some folks that are traveling together, I mean, I looked at all the travel that came to us, and there was five or more going. So they either can't eat together or eat across from each other at separate tables. I just think 18 would be more appropriate.
Do you have some suggested language?
Or, I, I think adding the line. Gosh, well, it's 15, see, 15% is everywhere. It's also on page seven and on page eight. So perhaps adding in the-
Could, could we maybe just put an asterisk next to each 15%? And then add a little statement that clarifies?
That would work if we add, and, and the statement could-
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just sitting there looking at my AP technicians going, oh, my gosh, so we have a table of eight. There's, all of them are employees of the district. They only get $30. And, and where's the original receipt for all of these people? I mean, it, and then did they all turn in theirs at the same time and say, Dave ate at my table, but now he's putting in it? I mean, it gets, I don't know. It's, it's really, really time-consuming for things like that.
So then, I mean, I guess, it, I, I'm trying to figure out, because group travel happens, and so unless I'm not seeing a group travel policy, I, I am trying to figure out how to incorporate it in what we already have. And I would hate to penalize our employees on something like that. Well, you have to pay, because it's imposed. It's not a choice.
We can put a, we can put an asterisk next to every 15% and say that if 18% or greater is imposed on you by the restaurant, then we will allow 18, we will allow that rate. What if we just say that rate? Because maybe somebody's this bigger.
Seems to be that it would be the-
It would be on the receipt.
It would be the employee's responsibility to make copies of the original check, so that each person can submit their own.
Can I just follow up on that?
I would think that you would just put something like, in the event the gratuity is in excess of 15% and imposed on you by the restaurant or whatever, something that, then you will, you can provide copies of the receipt, and you'll be reimbursed for actual cost.
Maybe we should say up to a certain amount.
Yeah.
Right.
Can I just ask how that works, though, in practice? Say you've got a table of 10, and one person pays, and it's on one credit card, then we are asking people to provide original receipts. Do they all have to then make a photocopy of the one person? Are they all, or do they all have to pay separately?
No. Well, we just went for three people down to Casbo, and one person picked up the check. So on my reimbursement for that Friday night, I put Elaine paid. So Elaine's got the full itemized receipt. It's 30, 30, 30. Let's pretend. So she's got the full receipt. So she asked for the full reimbursement. Julie did the same. Elaine paid.
Okay. And that's what we did.
But that's what we need, is communication on those, on those-
Right. Those people have to collaborate.
Those claims.
And I-
Okay, so-
So, and my suggestion would be up to 18%.
Okay.
Actually, that would be my suggestion. And then lastly, someone mentioned, and I just heard it mentioned, about getting alcohol on a separate receipt when possible, and I actually didn't see that. I didn't read that anywhere. So perhaps in the meal section, adding a sentence that employees are encouraged to request separate check or receipt for alcohol purchases with a meal. And that's all I have.
On the bottom of page seven-
Oh, sorry, Mr. Herron?
Yeah, the bottom of page seven, it does say alcoholic beverage expenses will not be reimbursed under any circumstances. So how they pay for it is, should be really up to them, shouldn't it?
It, right.
We should never see it.
We shouldn't, but it'll still show up on a receipt, so.
That's okay. We don't pay it.
Right. And I'm just wondering if we add that sentence, it'll also encourage folks to get a separate receipt, and then it's a lot cleaner, because we don't have to deal with the tax or the tip or anything like that.
Okay. Ms. Deacon?
Can I just follow up on the early bird piece? Because I know we had this discussion previously, and I think it's important, because we actually can save a fair amount of money if, if we do that. And I know that there is an issue with people just not submitting the paperwork in a timely fashion. A lot of major conferences, you know, almost a year in advance when the dates are. And so I'm not sure if there's a way to impose some consequences for that. I mean, I, because people I suppose could always say, well, I didn't know. But there seems to be, needs to be some kind of carrot and stick process here for getting the early bird piece in. And, and the one other question I had about the request to be absent from regular assignment, people are supposed to list all their anticipated expenses, and then if some of those expenses don't trans, like paying for internet or something like that, they're supposed to list them all ahead, and then if they don't expend that money, then they just don't claim it? Is that how that works?
Yeah. If they, if they use it and it's not on there, they can have their supervisor go and say it was okay to do, to reimburse this. We've talked about this, because people are not anticipating everything yet. You know, it's a learning process. What we are finding out is that they put on 350 for, because they're guestimating the flight, and they have no idea how much that flight is. And then all of a sudden, purchasing makes the order, and it's 395. Well, then our purchasing department goes 395, initials it, and it's all good. Same with the hotel. And we're working through this whole process. We're trying to, we're, we're going to fine-tune this travel policy. But the early bird, as you said, it, you know, it's, I always know in Casbo is the day that, the last, the minute we arrive, we know what next year is. So we put it on our calendars, we know. They send out information. But that's within the district office. So I don't know how the, how the information gets extended out to our staffs at other sites. And, and I, I don't know how to drive that home, except to keep repeating it.
Incentivize it.
Yeah. That, but I want to, I do want to say one thing, that I know the travel policy's getting bashed a lot, but we are saving money. People, I, I share a room, you guys are sharing a room, Washington people are going on, they're sharing, they're carpooling, they're, they're saving money, and that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Oh, Ms. Parker?
I just wanted to point out a, a small typo at the bottom of page eight, where it says double accommodation is highly recommend. I could just add an ED to that.
Highly recommended.
There's a few periods missing throughout the text, too.
Can I move that we approve the amended AR 3350, with all the recommendations that we have discussed and agreed upon?
It is, do you feel comfortable that you've captured all the revisions that we have requested? Okay. So we have a motion, then? Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay.
On page nine, can I ask one question?
Yes.
There's a word under airfare, employees are forbidden from making their own. That word just bothers me, but I guess, is that a-
Shall not?
Prohibited?
Prohibited?
Prohibited.
Or may not, or something. Just forbidden just sounds like-
It should be pretty strong.
I think it should be strong.
If you put may not, they'll say may, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, shall not.
Forbidden just sounds like a not.
How about prohibited?
Prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will accept that.
All right there. Employees are prohibited from making their own hotel receipts.
I will accept that as well.
Okay. Okay, then are we set? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, BP 3600.
I, I really like the, the drive for consistency and streamlining. I'm, I'm always in favor of that when it makes sense. And I think it makes sense here. So I'm, I don't know how much discussion we want to have on this item, but I'd be willing to make a motion to go ahead and approve BP 3600.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. That brings us to the end of our conference agenda. We need to return to our consent agenda for two items. Item, excuse me, item D7 and item D8. So we will begin with item D7. Ms. Parker, I think you pulled this.
No.
Oh, Ms. Deacon, sorry.
These are both mine. And my question really had to do with whether we were asking for as much money as we could possibly get. And I did get the answer from Cynthia White. On D7, the, this is a federal program, the Perkins Grant, and it's, there's a formula that is provided to us. So we have asked for the maximum under that formula. So I'm willing to go ahead and move to approve item D7, Approval of Career Technical Education Annual State Funding Application.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0.
And-
On that one, I would like to thank the Partners in Education for submitting a letter of recommendation for that grant.
Great. That, we appreciate that.
Perfect.
Okay. Item D8?
And D8, we have asked for the maximum allowable, which is $150,000. And this is a one-time grant, and it, it came across our radar, and I really appreciate the staff jumping on it right away. It was a short window, and we're partnering with San Barbara City College on this. So as, as much as we can do to ask for money, I'm completely in favor of. So I will move to approve item D8, Approval of Intent to Apply for SB 70 Middle Grades Career Technical Education and Career Pathways Grant for 8th Grade Students.
Actually, my thank you is to that, that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. So that brings us then to coming events. I think we mentioned most of those at the outset of this meeting. Future agenda items, I think, Ms. Deacon?
Can I just echo what Mr. Herron said earlier about the Planned Parenthood report? Because I, I do feel that it's quite likely our staff is actually complying with all the, the laws related to this. But for whatever reason, and it might be useful to know why, that information was not adequately provided to Planned Parenthood, and we might want to correct that.
We're taking a look at that, and we'll get you a report on that.
Okay. So is that something you want on the agenda, or do you want that in a board brief?
It could be in a board brief, but I think it should also ultimately involve follow-up with Planned Parenthood, so that they know.
Oh, yes. Definitely.
Okay.
And Board, I need to ask you, at what point do you want to take up future Board Focus Goals, which would entail revisiting the current Board Focus Goals and setting new goals for this next year, or continuing these goals this next year?
Well, I would just say, after we have a new superintendent.
Okay. Well, I'll put it on the list for July 10th.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Normally, I would say it needs to be done well before June 30th.
Right.
But obviously, this is an exceptional year.
Okay. So we have two meetings coming up. We have a special meeting with the San Barbara City Council this, well, tomorrow, Wednesday, April 27th, at 1:30 here in the boardroom. And then our next board meeting will be Tuesday, May 10th, at 6:30, again, here in the boardroom. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.